Call to meet an order. And everybody's got the, uh, the bug. Uh, sorry, can I get you to do the pledge of allegiance just a minute?
I'll pass it to Jackie.
Jackie's got the, I've got this seat.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the, uh, we have our new councilman, David Handy, here to second over from right. And of course, our, our re-elected councilman, Mike Havel, and Tina Monahan. And we're gonna have our attorney, he's gonna give you the oath of office. And we're gonna do it out here in front of the, uh, of the podium here if you would like to step out there. Um, Mike, we got you on the agenda first, you want it?
You want to look at it?
You wanna do it in a big room?
Just move your sweater up.
He's taking a picture.
Oh, a picture?
Yeah.
You do not have to repeat after me.
Okay.
But you will say "I do" at the end.
Kinda like wedding kind of thing.
Not exactly. "I do, so solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of councilmember of this city, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, and of the United States of America." If you do so, swear and affirm, please say "I do."
I do.
Alright, thank you.
Welcome to the meeting. Okay, David, if you would go, uh, this is Councilman David Handy.
It should be easy now since we've done it once.
Yeah.
"I do so solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of councilmember of this city, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, and of the United States of America." If you do so, swear and affirm, please say "I do."
I do.
Alright, congratulations, David.
If Tina, if you would.
"I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of councilmember of this city, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, and of the United States of America."
I do.
Okay, next we've got, uh, to appoint Mayor Protem. Jackie has served for a couple of years now and, uh...
One year.
One year. I thought he served for two years. One. Who served the other term? I don't know. Okay, we'll open the floor to nominations. I'll make the motion, nominate Jackie as Mayor Protem. Should we have a second? Second. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion, second to appoint Councilman Jackie Jarrett as Mayor Protem. If you'd like, let me know when you raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Next, we have the, uh, the agenda approval. The agenda was posted and sent out. And we may not have got everybody's email. If you will, um, please, uh, random it down here on the end. This is our, is our new city clerk. If you want to make her aware of what your email address is for sending minutes, we'll be sure we send you a minute to, uh, minutes following meetings. Yeah, Mike?
Where are we at?
If she hadn't been gesturing, you'd know.
I know, I know where I am.
Okay, the minutes, the agendas was mailed out or sent out and posted on the door. Has everybody looked it over?
Was it emailed out?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Not to the council.
I don't, I don't, four days in advance?
I don't know either.
So, we posted it on the door. So, another council got an email four days in advance, which the council voted unanimously. Yeah, we were gonna do that.
Check.
Check. So, Amanda, in the future, and I know you're brand new, you don't know this, but we voted as a council, the agendas were supposed to go out four days in advance. And the reason for that is so that we can read it in advance and not have to, like, for example, minutes, read it, take up time for the public. And so, when we come to the meeting, we're ready to go. Also, when you come to the meeting, the agenda is a surprise. We know in advance what are the issues that are gonna be on there.
Is that before it would be an email?
That's how they've always done it in the past. It just showed up on my email.
Of course, now, we've had it posted on the door. And I preserved, Councilman Havel looking at it, so he was aware.
That's because it wasn't here, uh, on my computer, four days in advance. So, I went to see if the mayor had failed him.
No, the mayor hadn't failed.
He had failed.
The mayor didn't do email.
The mayor's failing when he doesn't do email.
Mayor's not failing. Mayor, mayor's not required.
Then assign that to your clerk, 'cause that's your job.
Well, that's what I'm gonna do to my new clerk.
Okay.
And our new clerk is doing, doing a great job so far. She's, uh, she's really picking up on things.
We're all happy with that.
All the bills are paid and, um, we're coming along well.
Too bad our four days in advance notice didn't happen, I'm sure.
For most people, that's not a problem.
What are you saying?
I'm saying for most people, it's not a problem. Okay.
When the council votes unanimously to do it, the mayor should take action to make sure it happens.
I think that's most people.
We keep a clerk, we will do something.
Is that most people?
If we keep a clerk, we will do that.
Is that most people?
If we keep a clerk, this conversation's over. Over, we're sending the idiots up here.
Yeah. Send it out. Do it on time, do it like it's supposed to.
Well, we posted it like it's supposed to, like we're gonna go out.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody got any comments, any changes on the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the agenda? What's the consequence of not making the motion to approve the agenda? It's a very interesting question. I guess the meeting would stop. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it, Mike.
Have a motion, a second to approve the agenda as posted. All in favor, let me know when you raise your right hand. Okay, so we have two to approve, and I guess we have three to oppose.
Is, is, is that true, three opposed to the agenda?
All opposed, raise your right hand.
I think, I guess the next order would be to request, well, that's a possibility, unless there's some motion to alter the agenda.
If any motion to alter the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn if the meeting cannot continue without the agenda being approved.
I want, I want to ask some questions, 'cause why is everybody against approving the agenda? Can we, can we discuss that part of it?
Sure.
Sure. Well, how come you, how come you not want to approve it?
Go ahead, I'll pass it.
Tina, how come you're not?
Um, well, first of all, I apologize, I'm not feeling myself. Um, mine was more of a foggy brain. Do we need to remove the police department report? Or are you giving the report, or do we need to remove it?
I have a copy already.
I got it.
Okay. Alright, so should we adjust that and remove that?
No, we'll, I was just going to go ahead and present it when, when the...
Okay, you're gonna present it, okay.
Okay, was the, uh, if I may, was the purchasing of the crack machine, was that a part that you didn't vote to?
Well, I had thought we had already voted no on that twice, but now that you mention it, that wasn't considered.
No, we haven't voted twice. We said no. What we done is we stopped all projects, or start back, which I asked Lou about it. If the money was there, I asked her to come out and generate funds. She said we could go ahead and proceed with it, 'cause I've generated funds. Cast it presented again, it'll be fine.
Okay. So, we're not gonna wait till after the, um, budget is presented?
Budget has presented, I asked you.
I'm sorry, not the budget, the audit, my apologies.
I'll let you say that was as good.
Well, I was just more or less saying neutral here, but if we need to move on, can I change my vote and just go ahead and vote to approve it?
I think we've got, uh, Mr. Thacker made a motion to adjourn. I don't know if you want to continue with that motion or if you want to withdraw.
I would withdraw it.
Okay. And I guess we're back on the possibility of approving the agenda.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and vote to approve it.
I think we need a new motion.
Okay, you're gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as posted. I'll second it.
I'll second it. All in favor, let me know when you raise your right hand. Okay, we've got five to one, I mean, five to zero, approve. Okay, next, we have approval of the minutes from December the seventh, two thousand and fifteen meeting. And, uh, the, uh, we were without a clerk, so, uh, the, uh, the minutes from the meeting. Now, I wasn't invited to one meeting, so, uh, you know, I don't have any idea what the minutes are for that meeting. But, uh, that's the, the closest I can come to the, to the minutes that we, that we got. And, and, uh, Mr., uh, our, our, our council provided the, uh, the minutes from the, from the seventh, from January the seventh meeting. Well, Tina, you kept most of them down. Did you see anything, commissions or anything here?
No, no, when I compared it to my notes, I didn't really, I didn't notice any problems.
I'll make a motion, we accept the, uh... Okay, do we have a second?
Is that on just December seventh, or...?
Well, I think we should, we probably... Said I made, I made a quick note of, of the meeting that we had to, to come up with people at, at the council, pick the interview for the position of clerk. And, um, those are in the mini-book. And then we had the, uh, we had the executive session where we held those interviews, where we hired the two employees. So, uh, those are in the mini-book, although we don't, didn't have a clerk or anything to do that. So, for December the seventh and the, uh, seventeen?
December the seventeenth.
And twenty-first?
Twenty-first, right.
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes. Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes as posted on all three of those meetings. I have a second.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve those minutes. All in favor, let me know when you raise your right hand.
Discussion? Goes like this.
Discussion.
Thank you. So, December twenty-first minutes, uh, we, we went into executive session, but we never came out of executive.
Yes, as you.
We did, yes, here's the report. It doesn't show on here.
We didn't have a clerk to take the minutes.
Shouldn't it show as the rest of the agenda?
If you like, we can check, we can amend it.
And also, does it show us that we adjourned the meeting?
If, if you like, we can amend it to that.
I think it would be good if you looked at the other minutes of it, that was the thing. They also say, literally behind each item, it said, "The general approval," who did it. That's all, nothing's on here. I mean, it's depending how, what you want to put your minutes.
Well, you want, you want to change that to, to reply?
I, I think you should, you're the ones who took the...
Well, it's by the means of it is. If you want to change that, you can.
So, this is, this is how you do it? Okay?
So, we have a motion, second, if, if, all in favor of putting the bits, raise your right hand. Okay, we have three, yes.
I think we had four.
We had four. Oh, four, I'm sorry. About four, yes, and I missed it.
Wait a minute, is that with the additions that Mike was talking about?
I don't believe so.
He didn't make any.
He didn't, he didn't like it the way it was.
He didn't want making a motion.
That's as, as, I think, as the...
As posted.
Oh, as posted, okay. 'Cause I don't have notes from the one meeting queue. Did you take notes, Mike?
I know, we didn't conclude our meeting.
If I did, I did it in my other binder, I'm sorry. I was gonna try to adjust it and fix it, but I don't...
I blew it, it was the one time you didn't bring us an in-tape recorder.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm a slacker.
Typically, you bring it in tape recorder, into the executive session, and it's taped recorded. And that's why you have, you just give it to Amanda after that, she typed it in.
We, uh, under advice of our attorney, we don't record executive sessions.
Really? Okay. And you can do that for a few years. When I was mayor, we did, that was, I guess, entered.
At least two years. Okay, do we have a vote, do we have a vote yet to adopt the, the minutes as...
I think you had four. And then, were there any opposed?
Mike had moved both opposed, uh, Max opposed.
Okay.
Okay, next, we have reports from departments. Now, Chief Reel, he's, uh, he did, he's, he says he doesn't initially, won't start getting up and doing the long drawn out reports, as he told me to. But the, the, uh, reports that I received, received from Chief Reel is that the DOD project, and that's the Department of Defense projects, uh, are the stuff we got received from them, uh, to be able to turn in or transfer our showdowns. Uh, we're gonna have to have Officer Wilson attend that, attend that training class, which is the fifteenth day of, of January in two thousand and sixteen. And where's that class at, Mark?
I think they're at even in Atlanta.
So, it is Atlanta, okay. So, it'd be in Atlanta, where you're looking about. And he's, he's willing to, to go to the meeting.
He's gonna go down there and...
Okay, on one twelve, Officer Wilson will be attending the required post certification class in Dawson County. Now, that is for his research, he, he's up for recertification required in the twenty Allen, right? He's up to date, but he's got, uh, and that will be in Dawson, in Dawson, Georgia, or in Dawson County?
Dawsonville.
Dawson, okay. There is a Dawson, Georgia. Distance off. Okay, on one twenty-six, Officer Wilson and Chief Reel will both be attending a class on how to operate tide reader. And that will be in Atlanta area, you travel together for that.
Correct.
And, uh, we don't have anybody certi, we're not operating the tide reader at this point, 'cause we don't have anybody certified to operate it. Okay. I mean, he's still continuing, we're, we're not that far off from having a state accredited police department. Uh, we are continuing to work on that. According to, to the report from Officer Reel, from Chief Reel, the, uh, that will be completed on April, if not sooner. And that, and we're real far along with that process. And also, we're in the process of trying to find a radar class, which we, we don't have radar because, because they were all using the, uh, the, uh, what is the machine you use?
Well, we, both vehicles have radar, and we just have, we can't get certified, we can't get classed.
Right. Sure. Okay, so they are, they are pursuing that, and, and just as soon as we can get set up for it, we'll, we'll have the officers up certified up to, uh, up to perform those duties. Would anybody like, anybody have any questions they'd like to ask, Mark? Yeah, um, how, how long would it be before you can be certified in radar?
Depends on when I can find a class. Right now, none of the agencies have their, uh, training scheduled posted yet. So, maybe by the end of the month, I can find a class. Pickle was talking about posting one, but, uh, they aren't sure yet.
Is the city still got its license, or are they due to, they renew?
Yeah, everything's good. We just have to go to a class and get certified to operate them.
Okay. That's just, do the math as soon as possible. And we, do we have a list of, uh, of the, uh, the stuff that we have accumulated from, for the reserves and everything? Do we have a list of them and how, how much we're gonna have to turn back in, or...?
That's gonna depend on what the council wants to do with all that stuff.
The, um, the real, the, the class that Officer Wilson's attending deals with, with the, uh, how to handle either turning it in or deciding if we need to, if we can give it to another department, or what's the proper disposal is for, for that, for those goods. And it's yet to be determined exactly which route we want to take on all of them. Well, do we have, do we have the proper papers yet to show what, what we have purchased, or what we have got, and what...
I have all the receipts of from what they got.
All the services, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, that was the main thing, I'm just trying to figure out. Got a head cold, so I'm trying to figure out how to ask the questions.
No, I, I have all the receipts that, um, David Hughes has gotten.
Well, have we contacted also the, the, uh, the ones that had the bulletproof vests and stuff, about turning them back in, or what? Have we done anything on that? So, we received, well, Jim had asked for and everything, uh, we don't have any need for them now, do we?
The tokens?
Yeah.
Uh, those challenge coins?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I mean, they're already paid for, they're yours, so...
But what are we gonna do with them? I mean, we can't return them or nothing?
No, sir, you can't. It's just money that's, was spent and you've got some...
Eight hundred dollars for tokens.
Yes, sir.
They're not a casino or something, we won't use them again or something?
No, I'm not gonna open one anymore.
Check it. Just asking, we never know. Those were used as, uh...
As participation prizes for, for the, the, the kids. And matter of fact, the, the people that showed up for the, uh, for the races that, uh, that the police department sponsors. So, uh, they've opened around there a couple of years. It's not just something new. They're bought out of reserve funds. Anybody else like to ask anything, or Mark?
Yeah, if I, if I could, is there any record of, uh, I mean, I heard when Jim had a G R or something about the car that went to South Atlanta several times. Do you know anything about that, or who it advocated, or how come it would have been up there?
The car?
Yeah.
The Charger?
Yes, yeah, I reckon.
I, I, it was not me, I don't know, I, I...
Well, I know it would be.
No, I, I, he drove that car, I never drove that car, so I couldn't...
Well, it wasn't the Tahoe that went to South, do you know anything about one of the trips to South Carolina?
Not unless somebody went down there to pick up some stuff from Warner Robins or Benning, but, um...
I, I just started hearing about some of this stuff, and I didn't know, I was just trying to make heads or tails or something.
Right. Whatever he did and ass be done, I didn't, I didn't really know anything about that.
Well, I just didn't know if you knew anything about it.
No, sir.
I mean, I wasn't accusing you of that, too.
No, I tell you if I did it.
Oh, yeah, I know. Anybody else have any questions, Officer Chief? Okay, next, we'll get on to the, uh, the mayor's report. If we had continued working on our community center, we'd have had a pretty successful year, but, uh, unfortunately, uh, we kinda got stopped in the middle of working on the community center, which is something we need to get started back up. But we've, uh, we've done a lot of ditching, a lot of, uh, of, uh, all the way up Blue Ridge Avenue or Cherokee Street, and, uh, over at North Avenue and the, uh, uh, the Water Street, and the wall down at the community center, it's concession stands behind the, uh, behind the, uh, the basketball, or baseball court down there. And also, we can improve the drainage a great deal over, over right down the road. If we get back into, to action on the community center, Councilman Jarrett had done a, a lot of work down there, or had his own time with us furnishing the materials. And of course, we got it, the electrical problems are, are ready to go. It's, uh, you know, we're, we're in pretty good shape if we can get past the, uh, the objections on the council to continue with the community center. Okay, now, we've been borrowing a crack sealing machine from, uh, from the city of Jasper.
Mayor?
Yes.
On your report, can you bring us up to date on the audit and what the meeting schedule is and where we have...
Meeting will be a week from Thursday, be the regular on our Thursday. The, the auditor couldn't attend the meeting tonight.
Okay.
So, she said there's nothing she could do about that. So, she's set for the, uh, Thursday, which is where our normal work session is, which will turn into a regular meeting.
Okay, so you advertise that, so that we can make it...
Papers that we're supposed to.
Yeah, 'cause we would need to act on it, I would assume. So, can you, can you, a work session, but then we still need to be able to take a vote on the, to accept it. So, we need to have that declared as a public meeting.
You can actually vote at work sessions.
Oh, you can?
It is traditional to...
Oh, so we don't need to advertise it?
I mean, just the normal, you know, letting people know the agenda and all that. But it doesn't have to be anything special. You're allowed to vote at work sessions. Traditionally, cities don't, you know, but I think, what I advised, I think, is putting on the agenda as a voting item, just so there's clarity.
Clear question.
If you know you're gonna vote on something.
And I did everything I could do to get Tacy Jo to come to the meeting tonight, but she had a prior commitment to do with, with the auditing process in another community, so, uh, we will be advertising that.
So, we have to have it in by the end of the month?
Right.
So, then we, we be fine?
Oh, yeah, we got the, you know, she notified the, uh, sent written letters into the, uh, to the proper bureaus and higher-ups, and it's all pretty... You're supposed to move it this Thursday morning, ain't you?
Thursday, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, we'll move on to old business that we've knocked around or kicked around, purchasing a crack sealing machine and additional seal materials for, you know, we said, we've got Jasper's borrowing now. The problem is, when we borrow Jaspers, we've got two men standing there waiting on running one machine. And we've got a lot of sealing to be done. So, I've tried to get, um, the council to approve, which I understand the reason it was turned down to... was turned down to, uh, to wait till the audit was finished, but, uh, uh, the, the cost of a, of a sealing machine, which will be run two, where we run the Bobcat material out there, uh, the sealing machine itself is fourteen hundred dollars, and that's used to seal the cracks in the roads, and if you go on every D O T road, you'll see cracked sealing done on every single road. It's a way to preserve your, your road surfacing. I can't understand why we wouldn't want to preserve our road surfacing. But now, if we continue with receiving our sales tax revenues, like we're getting from Pickens County, it'd be my proposal that we'll undertake a major road resurfacing at the end of that, which should be around three quarters of a million dollars, which will pay quite a few, uh, a few roadways in the city. And also, we need another pallet of the sealing material, which is twenty, twenty-one hundred and twelve dollars. So, uh, I would like to see us approve purchasing the machine, which will give us opportunity to run two machines. Till Jasper wants her machine back, uh, we'll be running two machines, and we've got until the end of June to complete our L B program where we, where we'll seal the roads, that we, where we've got all these cracks in the roads. Any discussion?
We made a motion, don't we discuss it?
Why, you wanna make a motion?
No.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion, go ahead, and purchase the machine, which was always actually played on duty to start with. Like I said, Lou said money's there, we can go ahead, and that has come out of general funds, and general funds is okay. So I'm making a motion to purchase the, uh, the, uh, cracking machine and the materials, sealing materials. Can the highest question?
Sure.
How much more, uh, crack sealing you gotta do?
Well, we gotta do CD.
Continuously.
Well, it's something to be a continuous program. Look at the ones that we've got done, and they've held up real well here now, and they, you know, year over year since we did the first, and we've been using the City of Jasper's machine to do it. We bought a pallet of the, uh, of material to go in it, but if we, uh, if we, with the same amount of labor we've got out right there now, we can be running two of them. And it's my goal is to finish it.
Not being, you can discuss about a motion.
Don't go out of order.
It's supposed to be asked for a second, and then you have discussions to go on.
Well, he was gonna, he was gonna second it, but.
Yeah, I just wanna understand how much more has, uh, gotta be done, which I know is something that has to be done, that's what keeps you watered from going to your base and running your road, but, uh.
I asked Joey to answer your question, he said about forty-five, fifty percent of this done.
Forty-five?
Yeah. Ask every question again.
And with one machine, it'll take to twenty, twenty, finish it?
No, no. That wasn't her, that, that wasn't accurate.
That was exactly what he told me.
But I mean, you gotta return the other machine receipt.
Well, it's been done.
I mean, wondering that, uh, twenty-two thousand to be able to, and it'll be done at one or ten. How, how long did it take to do the first half?
It's longer than that.
Working on the first half.
What he told me.
Uh, he's, he's, he needs to red manage it.
Okay.
We, uh, if I may, uh, unrecognized, I guess I don't, okay. Uh, the only thing is, I say that we've still got the same problem that we have, the audit still hasn't been completed. And really, Lou may have said we've got it in, in our general funds, I don't know how much we've got until this audit is done and reports are made on it, I don't know how much we've got in the general fund.
You have your, your paperwork right here. The, uh, general fund has up today had two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents in it, with sixty-four-hundred dollars obligated, given the projected balance of two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-one-twenty-five-fifty-three. Our savings account for the whole time has remained at eighteen-thousand-three-four-five-twenty-three. Our CD reserve has remained at twenty-four-thousand-eight-fifty-four-fifty-six. Our S P L O S two-checking has twenty-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten dollars and twenty-seven cents in it, which is our S P L O S three CDs. And these are CDs from the Cherokee County S P L O S that has been there, you know, there's, there's three of them, you know, it's up to, it only has up to a hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars, but those are fifty-thousand-dollar CDs from the Cherokee County S P L O S the last time. And then, under the current S P L O S, Cherokee County S P L O S four, which we received funds, we received the check today of, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-two-fifty-one-on-one. S P L O S two-checking, um, that is, um, what was, what was it we decided on then?
Of the first process?
Now, the Pickens is, yeah, okay. Pickens S P L O S is one-thirty-one-six-four-one, six, now, the reason that says Pickens S P L O S, you know, we, we're not gonna spend, hopefully, we're not gonna spend any money at all out of the Pickens S P L O S, till we get it all in, and then we can take on a major repaid program, would be what I would recommend do it. Now, two-thousand-eight S P L O S checking is a remnants of the, where we bought the tag reader and the remnants that we received from, from the Pickens County Corps S P L O S, and we've still got that. So we've got a total of nine-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-plus dollars in it.
Well, now, what, uh, my understanding of some of this, I, I didn't make it.
Sorry, take a quick question.
He, he just started talking, I thought it was still at the floor for me, but I, anyhow, my understanding of some of these CDs that we've done is where we closed out S P L O S accounts, which that would mean, instead of going back into general fund, they would have to go back into S P L O S funds.
They're still, they're still in the S P L O S fund, which we could ever.
So, so we can't buy, we can't, we can't go with what you got down here for CDs to buy anything with general funds, like the purchase this machine, if you're gonna buy it from general funds, it's gotta be pulled out of general funds, and we've done, uh, my understanding is, we've done exceeded a lot of our general funds.
Our checking account as of today had two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in it after the, um, the outstanding checks.
Well, this might be a order personally, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to lay this on the table till after we see the audit and we see what we have got. Is that, how would I go about doing that?
Uh, well, right now, there's a motion, not yet seconded, to purchase the crack sealing machine, so I guess, see whether that motion's gonna go anywhere or not. So I guess the question is on that one, is there a second to that motion?
I mean, we, we'd still get it later, but I'd like to lay them, I'd like to put it on the table till this audit comes through. Uh, I think we're rushing things sometimes.
And that's what I mean, that was third, right?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, two weeks and thirty.
I'm sorry, summer, I'm sorry.
Well, that would be.
It's, um, usually the third, third.
Thirty-third.
That is twenty-first.
Cause I'm, I'm just a little nervous about what's left in general funds, since, uh, so much questions coming up about it and everything, I wanna, uh, I just don't wanna be a part of spending any more out of general funds, I know what the audit says.
Okay, what is?
I want somebody to definitely let me know that we've got enough money to run the city in general funds, and I don't wanna just keep spending out of it. I'm sorry, I just don't see it.
If you have a S P L O S that includes streets and roads, I think this would be inappropriate S P L O S expenditure.
That's been my point to hold, the whole town, when you spend it out of S P L O S. We've got three-hundred.
But you wouldn't say S P L O S there, excuse me, you would say general funds, and.
No, no, my opinion's always, my opinion always has been.
The auditor said that it has to come out of general funds.
Well, that's the, Lou's the one that's told me it has to come out of general funds.
Yeah.
My opinion would be it'd be a capital expenditure for streets and roads, but I have not discussed that with the auditor, to see what their opinion would be.
Well, I would say.
I don't know why they wouldn't, but.
I would think at this point, we need to talk to the auditor and find out some of these things. I mean, we, we have.
Are we gonna give a second? We, we were talking, we're having discussion.
Well, we were talking about.
A second, but, uh.
We'll just withdraw it.
Okay.
Are you happy with that?
No.
Okay, you did withdraw.
I guess, the motion's still hanging out there, is there a second to Mr. Thacker's motion to purchase the equipment? I think that.
Okay, we can't get.
Unless, without a second, the motion fails.
Motion fails, okay. Alrighty. Okay, move on to new business, and we have the, uh, the council appointments, uh, of our city attorney, municipal judge, city solicitor, and our chief of police, Chief Reel, and Officer John Wilson, and we need those for, for those two. So, um, we've got the agenda there, what's your pleasure as far as the, the, uh, Mr. Continuous, Mr. Rushbridge is our city attorney.
Question. What's the difference between an attorney and a solicitor?
There's actually not any, but.
How come you get double billing here? What's your going on?
The charter says that the attorney shall be the prosecutor in the court, so there's really no need to do this separately, honestly.
Which one would you rather be, the attorney or the solicitor?
The attorney includes solicitors, so.
We don't have to, we don't have to give you two checks, then we, okay, that's.
He's that old hit, the mayor.
It's all, it's all doing the different stuff, but you don't have to appoint eight different solicitors, so.
Which one do we cross out?
I would cross out solicitor.
Okay.
That comes with the city attorney job.
And didn't we just make appointments of our chief of police and Officer Wilson?
Well, we've come past the first of the year, and.
Oh, okay.
Those, um.
We don't last over.
Those don't have to be appointed year to year, it's a, kind of like the clerk, once they're hired.
Don't have to get, you wanna get up in front, you wanna back?
They're hired.
Yeah, they've got two more crossed out lines, so.
Okay.
Expediting the meeting.
We have, um, those plannings, not only working on this.
No, we don't.
You had made yourselves the planning and zoning.
Uh.
This council is the. But right now, y'all are the planning and zoning board by ordinance.
But we, we've also gotta have a chairman, which currently, we have voted for Thacker to be the, so would we not have to?
You don't.
Is he, does, does he get to serve four years as, as that since we done voted on him?
You.
It says one to three.
That would be, because, I mean, it's a little weird that y'all are both, obviously, I think that that appointment is more along the lines of when councils appoint a, uh, council member that's kind of in charge of an area, which this council's done in the past, so if you have, yeah, I, I don't know how you specified that when you did that.
Maybe somebody over planning and zoning, we didn't have nobody, so.
Yeah, normally, that would be, that is the council member who is in charge of looking at planning and zoning matters.
And we appointed Thad to be the, uh, the coordinator on it, more or less.
I mean, y'all can appoint people like that for any area, at any time, and like some of the councils done that before with different council members for different duties, that is up to y'all.
Those were like committee assignments when they did that earlier, though, what they had, one for roads, one for reeds, one for.
You can do it either way.
Yeah.
You can have committees, you can have individual councils. That's your pleasure.
Well, moving right along, we've, we've, we've got the, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Rushbridge has done an excellent job and advised us on different matters over the years, so.
Make a motion to approve Mr. Rushbridge as the city attorney and Mr. Jones as a municipal judge.
And I'll second that.
Have a motion seconded, discussion. Okay, all the favor, let me know, we're raising right here. Alrighty, next we have public appearance, who would like to make a public appearance? Sure.
May, do I come up?
Yeah, come up here, you'll state your name and address.
Mayor Enhassman, and women, uh, my name is Doris Enhassman, I live at one-five-five Church Street, Nelson, Georgia, um, and I am here for concerns about the thing, the block on the top of the road, where it's closed, and I really am having concerns about emergencies and police, we would like police to patrol that area, and with that being there, it's ugly, for one thing, it makes our neighborhood looks ugly, and I just wanted to know if we can have it removed, or what can we do to get it removed? Cause it is really ugly in that neighborhood.
Uh, well, that's, we, we advertised it back when we did it, and tried to get all the public comment we could get on it.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's caused any problem as far as traffic, the main reason we did it was cause you couldn't pull up there and you couldn't really see what was coming from the south side, plus we had so many people that were just buzzing right off down the, to the left there, down toward Bethany's to church. So, uh, and it's a one-lane street down through there, and a couple of porches are real, you know, real close to the, to the street. Of course, some of them have small children, which is a concern.
It's not very many of us that have small children, uh, down there, uh, but, when it was going on and everything was going on, my son was in band and I was having to go to a lot of his meetings, or his concerts, so that's why I was missing the meetings, but other people could've came, but, um, it's just, it really does not look good, and we would like patrol, and as long as it's blocked up, we're not gonna get patrolmen to come through that area without going in somebody's yard, turning around, and going back out, there's firemen, if it's an emergency, they're having to move the, um, stuff to get people help, and it's just, it's not, not, it doesn't look good, and it's a concern. And maybe if we could get speed bumps or something, maybe to slow people down, that would be even better than just having that big orange thing up in the road.
Mark, did, did your officer, you and your officer drive up through there?
No, she's correct, cause I've gone up there a couple of times, and it's very difficult to turn around.
It is.
I mean, because their driveways are so short, and if they're parked, you pretty much have to back all the way out, and that's, that's not a good thing in a patrol car.
Well, what, what would you suggest, and everything is safety issues, cause that's the reason, that's the reason it was done, it wasn't done to punish nobody or anything like that. I went up there and looked, I went up there and looked at it myself, and somebody was, they was talking about doing a one-way. If you do a one-way down the hill, then that ain't gonna solve the problem, cause cars shoot down through there real fast, like, they're gonna run over somebody, kill them, that road's too narrow for two cars to pass on. Uh, my only thought was that you could come in from the bottom, even a, a emergency vehicle or whatever, we wanted to leave them loose up there, to where if emergency vehicle needed to move them, they could, but apparently, some smart addicts or some keeps going up there and moving them where they can go up and down through there, and it's, it's dangerous for the people that lives there. I'm old to anything for suggestion, we can't widen the road or nothing like that, so what are we supposed to do?
I don't know.
It's just like she's.
She said with speed bumps, yeah.
Put some speed bumps in, and that's gonna eliminate them turning off and yielding and flying down there, and that way, we can come down through there and not have to worry about hitting their car and backing up, or you just eliminate everybody, just barricade down, put speed bumps there.
I know in the past, and I've heard a lot of people complaining about speed bumps tearing their car.
Well, I mean, she's living there and, you know.
Yeah. But we al, we also had one lady that come up here that wanted the, the thing barricaded off, so now we got one coming up here after the fact, saying she don't want it, so deriving that ain't a reasonable.
Yeah. I don't think the lady that was there, I mean, she's moved, I don't think she's there any longer, so, um, but.
Hey, it's not wide enough for two, did it?
No, it's not wide enough, too.
That's really did it, it was the width of the road, road primarily.
But.
And, and people, you know, you, I've seen them myself, so, they just buzz right down through there.
They do, but if we can put the speed bumps, like I said, it, I mean, either they're gonna turn their car up, or they're gonna slow down. They do, but if we can put the speed bumps, like I said, it, I mean, either they're gonna turn their car up, or they're gonna slow down, one or the other, so.
I had this when you're meeting two cars.
Some cars move over to the other come by, I mean, it's no prob, I mean, they should move over.
Why don't you make it a one-way street coming in off of Bethesda Church?
Cause it's already happened now, you know, all the cars are not coming up there anymore, so it seemed like if you just put one way and do not enter on the top road and then go, go one way, then what? Then it should be solved, cause the cars have stopped coming.
We'd still have the same problem, uh, emergency vehicles tries to come up or down through there, you still got.
No, cause the block, that thing is off the top of the hill now. They can come in, they should be able to help whoever without delaying time.
If it's one-way, you can enter from Bethesda Church and go toward Pickens Street, and that way, emergency vehicles have access to it. And if, you know, obviously, they aren't gonna come down one-lane street. Well, they shouldn't, I'm not saying somebody won't, but, I mean.
Well, another thing we were trying to alleviate was those stop signs that were right next to each other there for several years, and then, you know, the stop, stop sign on Pickens Street, um, we, we put the, I don't think that having those crosswalks is has endangered any lives or anything, or as far as access to church has it.
No.
And doing away with that stop sign that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, okay, I guess, uh, that part is okay. It's just, um, it just, it's, we just would like it to be opened back up, or my family does at least. Uh, and I'm sure a few around of us, you know, it's just, uh, need to be opened back up, and either speed bumps one-way or whatever, if you can figure out something. It's just a concern, and it, cause it's really ugly.
Well, y'all live on the street, so we don't, I don't live around there, so.
Yes.
I was just trying to help in which way I could, you know. You want to, if you'd like to, uh, to come up with a petition to the people, people live down through there, and I would prefer to go with speed bumps.
How does the rest of council feel about that?
I would, I'd go for it, and then we can put it back on the June, and see if, see if we can afford to put some speed bumps down through there or not. I mean, I got no objection opening back up, that's what they're going. But, um.
Yes, Mike? I, I think what the chief has said about the one-way street might be an, an, an interesting option, and I personally don't like speed bumps, but I would try that one-way first, if that didn't work, then you could add a layer to it, which would be the speed bumps. And, you know, and, and do it as kind of a test, which is kind of what we've done, we've done a test, and you didn't like it.
Yes.
And, uh, just see if we can find a solution and, and have our police chief take the responsibility as a traffic expert, if he is, to, uh, come up with some solutions and see if we can do it better.
Mm-hmm. That's fine. So a one, one-way street would satisfy.
That would satisfy me.
And coming up from Bethesda.
Yes, coming up, and just, that would be fine.
If that doesn't work, we do the other way around, one-way street.
Well, if you do it the other way, you're still gonna have the problem of quieting out.
Yeah, so going up, we could.
Yeah, that's true. I think that'd be better.
That was her main concern, was the speed that they were trying to.
Coming down.
They get a run at it.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, but then you get a lot of people from, uh, coming east, and they wanna really go to Jasper, so they run up, you know, pretty fast. So they don't have to go all the way around, and so it's, it's kind of an awkward situation, and no matter what we do. But let's just try, try some experiments on it, see if we can find one that works, makes the most people happy.
Y'all wanna put it on the meeting, and we'll. Yeah, that, that sounds fine.
We'll get the petition before the meeting, or.
Yeah, if you would, just get the people that, that's interested in doing that, because it'd make it easier for us if we know who.
We already have the, the amount of people.
Of course, the main people we upset over there was the people that went to Bethesda Baptist Church.
True, I know.
Down through there.
Yes.
Well, mostly, mostly outsiders that didn't live there.
True.
And I, I didn't wanna put a lot of weight on what they were saying, because they, when they're going down Rebus Mountain, that's just a shortcut.
Yeah.
The more life is, the more it's in danger, you know, and so that's the ones that we were sort of looking for. But, you know, we, we're willing to work, we have, have what we can, you know, or I, you know.
We'll just get some names and turn them back in.
Okay, if you would, just have them sign in, date it, and put your phone number on it, and, and give it to our, our clerk over here, by happening, I'll be there, okay?
Thank you.
I think, appreciate your comment. Go ahead. I apologize, I thought about that.
Mark Callett, one-zero-zero-five, Laurel Lake Drive, Nelson. A couple comments. What happened to the ordinance that was gonna put, uh, public appearance in front of the door, and people who had questions would come to work sessions? What happened with that?
Never had it second reading. Is that what you'd like to see happen with it?
It's not up to me. But you see the, you see the results of not coming to the work session with your products.
Have you got the ordinance prepared yet? Right, we did the first reading of it, um, a few months ago. It was never put back on the agenda for the second reading. I assume there must be a reason, so.
You know, we've asked for that term, the other things going on, there's, it's easy for it to slip out.
Says it. But then you want to move it forward, you know?
And we'll put it on the, on the agenda for the second reading.
Do you want it back on the work session to discuss it? Or do you just wanna put it on the next?
We'll just put it on the agenda back in, in the first meeting, or the February meeting. That way, we won't have that much on here, our, uh, work session where we're gonna do the audit.
Everyone has to know.
Uh, let's cover the other ordinance that we had in progress. The one concerning naming the council as a planning commission, it's gonna be a change to the ordinance. In order to do that.
That was changed, uh, a long time ago.
We had first and second reading?
I believe so.
You sure?
I'm pretty sure. We can check the minutes to be sure.
Please, please.
Cause I believe that was accomplished.
I don't remember the second.
A year ago, I think, but.
I have it's more like six months ago.
We can check. You wanna check that much?
Uh, the reason I bring that up is kind of appears that your plan is kind of sputtering a little bit about having the council be the planning commission, because I know of the one issue instead of the chairman leading the discussion, the attorney did the public hearing, and then the chairman took over the rest of it. And I don't remember the chairman of the planning commission even being involved in handling that district. So, it would seem to me if you're gonna be a planning commission, uh, you know, get your organization apart together, and uh, you probably don't have to do this under that format, but when we were on the other planning commission, we had a vice chairman, so that if the chairman was not available for the day of the hearing or whatever, somebody else was pre-prepared with it.
You know, we haven't had any changes that we've had the, that's, you know, there's not that much activity out there as far as in, around Nelson.
Only takes one, the, for you to not be prepared and not come off too well.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When y'all had the planning zoning, uh, y'all, y'all did have, had to oversee, have to oversee permits and stuff?
No.
You didn't oversee them?
We just did the, uh, planning inquiry in accordance with the charter where the council appointed five people to be on the planning commission. And then we did a bylaws, elected our chairman and vice chairman, and then did all of the public hearings and whatever hearings we needed to do or discuss with people trying to make applications. And we had, one issue came up one time where the council appointed the planning commission to get involved in determining dilapidated houses, which was not really a part of a planning, uh, commission's role, other than the, uh, the charter says that the council can assign special projects to the planning commission to look into, which we did, a couple of those back during, when, uh, one of the mayors wanted to take in some of the roads out of the city, into the city, and those sort of things, studies. To answer your question, we didn't get involved in anything to do with code enforcement, nothing. Uh, my last issue, yes. Tonight was the night of oaths of office, and sadly, to say, that's been violated by various people a number of times. So I would ask you as a council to take a look at yourself and see if you're really upholding your oath. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
Okay, we don't, we don't have, uh, anything to do with an executive session, so we'll entertain, entertain a motion to the general. Motion to the jury? About a second. All the favor, let me, now we're raising right here. All right, we're adjourned.